Hey Andrew. When this meeting starts, is this computer gonna go to where we can see everybody at the same time?
Um, no, you'll have to change that setting. It's that little.
Plus button on the picture?
Uh, there should be a little, it looks like a little multi- multifaceted box should say something about view. Sorry, I'm not familiar with exactly where it is on the tablet.
It'll kinda look like the side of a dice. It'll have nine little boxes on it and that'll show you basically that you can see everybody.
Okay, how do I get to that point?
Uh, you might just have to tap on your screen and that'll bring up all your menu around.
Just like that?
You got it?
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Thank you Travis, I appreciate the assist.
You're welcome man. It's like walking my mother through or my kids through or anybody else. Just gotta figure out the way to speak.
I had it locked up the other day. I had to call Andrew and he says shut the dang thing off. Okay.
It's always, that's always option one. Turn it off and turn it back on.
Second one is unplug the wifi.
That's right.
That's right. Good ones look for the jumper cables, right?
Find a bigger hammer.
Yeah.
Good evening Pastor Cal.
Good evening everyone.
Evening.
It's good to be here.
I'm glad that you're here with us tonight. Appreciate, we appreciate, I appreciate that.
Welcome.
Um, I am showing six o'clock. I assume Michael is with us without picture and Will is also. Um, do we have all our commissioners? Andrew? Let me go through. There's Michael. I see Jeff just popped in. Do we have Mr. Rhodes? There is Mr. Rhodes.
I'm here.
Alright, well I'm gonna call this meeting to order please, cause it is, like I said, it is six o'clock, so let's call this meeting to order. Um, if Andrew has a picture of the flag, can we stand and say the pledge allegiance please? I pledge allegiance. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the invocation, which we have the pleasure of Pastor Cal Cozo from Trinity Lutheran Church, who is going to present that with us, and I'm going to say Pastor Cal, take her away.
Okay. I've been thinking about what we should pray for tonight, all day. And the one thing that keeps hitting me in my heart is this COVID thing. And it affects everyone, you know, in the whole world. And I just thought, we've, we pray, you know, that God would give us peace, you know, as we deal with COVID in our own lives and in the world. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we're very thankful that you're, you're with us all here tonight. As the city commissioners and others meet, we, we pray your Holy Spirit to be with them and say, talk about the various things on the agenda. Uh, but we, we're also concerned about COVID Lord. You know, it's affecting every one of us. It's affecting everyone in this world. And we just pray that your peace will abide in, in our hearts and our minds as, as we deal with it in our personal lives, in our family lives, our workplace lives, in the world. We just are affected by it. And please Lord, help us to see Jesus and what he did for us, uh, to give us his peace, uh, to get through this a- as a nation. Bless this meeting Lord, to your honor and to your glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Cal, and I'd like to, would you please extend our thanks to the Pastoral Association for allowing, for getting you gentlemen to do this for us. We really appreciate it.
I sure will.
Thank you very much. Uh, next item on our agenda is roll call and I have, uh, there he is, Ken Rhodes.
Hey, Commissioner Burr.
Present.
Commissioner Klinger.
Here.
Commissioner Wiki. Okay, I don't think Commissioner Wiki's here. Uh, Commissioner Malone.
He's under the weather right now.
Okay.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Lippman.
Here.
Commissioner Good.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Present.
Mayor Hile.
Here. Thank you sir. Uh, the next item is our proclamation, proclamations and presentations and we have tonight with us, uh, the Director of the United Way and we are going to see the United Way Christmas Cash Raffle drawing. Michael, would you like to introduce who you have with us?
Sure, thank you your honor. Um, I'm here with Kelly Hosteller. She's the Executive Director of the United Way and as you said, we're gonna draw the winning ticket for the Christmas Cash Raffle. Um, I wanna thank on behalf of the city, uh, Kelly and all her work to sell tickets, uh, all those that helped sell and, and purchase tickets as well. So, uh, we're trying to raise as much money as we can for United Way and, uh, people really pulled through. So our total cash prize-
Go ahead.
-is three thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. So, uh, a little bit more than last year, which we're super excited about. We have a special guest here today that's going to pick the winning ticket. So I'd like to introduce my Berkey.
So where do you go? Thank you so much to everybody who purchased a ticket. Thank you so much for allowing us to do this raffle with the City of Sturgis. We really, really appreciate everybody here at the city and our partnership with all of you. Um, last night we lost a board member, a prior board member for, to COVID. Um, rest in peace Fred Hanksen, we love you and, uh, he did a lot of great things in this county. You wanna draw a ticket? Let's give away thirty seven hundred dollars. Great, Gwen Donmeyer. Gwen Donmeyer wins thirty seven. Congratulations Gwen. We will have a check for you at the United Way office tomorrow, um, along with a W nine for you to sign for us to send this. Thank you so much. Thank you commissioners. Thank you your honor. We appreciate all you do here in the City of Sturgis.
Thank you Kelly.
Thanks.
Thank you for what you do for the United Way.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item on our agenda is the visitor section. Andrew, can we go back to our screen please? Yeah, I still do not have the full screen of, of all our participants here. Um, yeah, no, I, we are not sharing a screen at this point. Okay.
I think it defaulted to, uh, the not gallery view, so you may have to click on gallery view again.
Yeah, it'll be up at the top, Mr. Mayor.
Alright.
View. Top right. Oops, there we go. Nope, I am not getting it Andrew. Oh, are you looking for the, um, the participant screen, Mr. Mayor? Names. At the bottom, uh, at the bottom, there should be a button that says participants you'll need to click on. There it is, I found it. Oh, I got the names, but I don't have the pictures. Chat, record on this computer. I've got the participants' names, but I don't have pictures Andrew. Yep, that'll be, it's up at the top. It should be just to the right of participants, or excuse me, to the left of the participants bar. Should, very small in the, in the corner should say view. Yeah, I've seen it before, but I'm not getting that, that picture right now unfortunately. Okay. Well, unfortunately, there's nothing I can, I can do to change, change anything at this point, Mr. Mayor. Alright. Well, uh, is there any visitors in our audience who would like to bring something to the commission that is, uh, not on our agenda? Yeah, so for anybody who's attending via the Zoom meeting, if you wish to make a public comment at this time for an item not on the agenda, please use the raise hand feature, uh, to be acknowledged. Uh, you can find that at the bottom of your screen if you're on a PC. Um, it should be under the more, uh, button if you are on a tablet or, or on a phone, cell phone. Uh, if you're dialing in via phone and I don't see anybody who is, um, you can use star nine to raise hand. Give it just a second. I do not see any public comment at this time, Mr. Mayor. Okay, Andrew, and I did get back to a full screen where I can see everybody. Okay, good. Um, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda itself. I will take a motion please.
Alright, move for approval of tonight's agenda for Wednesday, December ninth, two thousand twenty is presented.
Second.
Uh, I have a motion. Uh, Mr. Smith, was that you?
Yeah.
By Mr. Smith. Um, roll call please. Approve the agenda.
Commissioner Wiki. Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lippman.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Mayor Hile.
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. And the next item on our agenda, I will take a, uh, motion to approve our consent agenda please.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion to approve and support. Roll call please.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki. Commissioner Lippman.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
And Mayor Hile.
Yes. Motion carries, thank you all. The next item on our agenda is the unfinished business section and we have two items there. The first item is the West Congress Street Phase Two Task Order. Barry Cox.
Yes, good evening Mayor. Can you hear me alright?
Yes.
Alright, so, uh, in November, City Commission approved Task Order ninety-four for designing, uh, West Congress from Centerville to Prairie. Uh, we had split the design and construction of the project into two phases due to potential timing issues for permitting with the railroad and, uh, for water permitting. Uh, and you, you folks requested that, uh, we look at getting a design task order for the entire project, uh, with hopefully the possibility of constructing both phases next year. So, before you is Task Order ninety-five and this is for the preliminary final and, but excuse me, final design as well as bidding phase activities for the remainder of the project from Prairie to South Clay. Uh, the, the overall scope of the project is very similar to the, the west half of the project. Um, they, depending really on the rapidity of how quick they can design it, get it per- permitted and try to coordinate potential construction schedules for the two phases, uh, we may be able to build it, to design it and bid it and possibly construct it later this year, or later in two thousand twenty-one. If not, uh, the work would be bid out in the fall of two thousand twenty-one for an early two thousand twenty-two construction project. Um, I guess at this point, if there's any questions regarding this, this is a budgeted, uh, project for this year, um, split between the streets and the water. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have, Mayor.
Alright, thank you Barry. Are there any questions or comments by the commission for Barry? On this task order? I don't see anybody waving at me. Andrew, you don't see any hands at all on the computer? I do not, Mr. Mayor. Alright, thank you. Um, are there any participants in our audience tonight that would have a comment on this topic? Once again, for anybody, uh, joining us via the Zoom meeting as an attendee, if you wish to make public comment on this agenda item, please use the raise hand feature to be acknowledged. I do not see any, Mr. Mayor. Thank you Andrew. Again, I'm gonna ask if there, one more time, if there is any commissioners who have a question or comment on this topic? Seeing none, what say the commissioner, commission on this topic?
Mr. Mayor, this is Commissioner Good. I would move that the Sturgis City Commission approved Task Order number ninety-five with Fleyson Vanderbrink Engineering Inc. for the preliminary design, final design and bidding services on the West Congress Street Utilities and Street Project in the amount of forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve and support. Roll call please, Mr. Rhodes.
Commissioner Lippman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Mayor Hile.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you Jeff, thank you folks. The next item on our agenda is the Zoning Ordinance Amendment for accessory structures, retail in manufacturing and duplexes in R three. This will be the second reading, Will. And I believe there are what, three motions to this Will? Correct? Correct. How, do you wanna do one motion at a time? We could just do one at a time, yes. Alright, then I'll let you present it that way. Thank you sir. Will. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen, go ahead and put the accessory structure up there. All set? I see it. Okay. This is a amendment to accessory building structures and uses. So after, over the last few months, the Planning Commission has been discussing changes to Section one point one one zero five accessory buildings, structures and uses. Uh, the changes would provide greater flexibility in permitting these structures within the city. Uh, the changes were recommended to the City Commission after a public hearing on November seventeenth. Some of the proposed changes include adjustments to the distance between an accessory structure and another building on the site, adjustments to the setbacks for accessory structures, changes to the maximum allowable height of accessory structures, changes to the calculation of maximum allowed square footage of accessory structures, and added language, uh, allowing for consideration for larger accessory structures on large lots. And after the last City Commission meeting, we added language, uh, from one point one one zero five A three that, uh, would separate swimming pools into their own section. Uh, if anybody has any questions regarding accessory building structures and uses, I would be happy to answer those. Any questions for Will on our first item here for zoning ordinances? And Andrew, I'm looking for you to help me. I see no hands raised from the commission, Mr. Mayor. Alright, let's ask if the public has any comments on this topic? Once again, for members of the public joining us via the Zoom meeting, if you have, uh, a comment or question on this agenda item, this specific, uh, the specific topic, please use the raise hand feature to be recognized. I see none, Mr. Mayor. Thank you sir. Uh, can we go back to the full screen or to, to see the, thank you sir. Thanks Will. Um, again, if there is no other questions, what it, what say the commission on this portion of this, uh, agenda item? Accessory building structures and uses?
Mayor Hile?
Yes.
I move that the city, uh, City Commission consider this the second reading of and approve the amendment to the City of Sturgis zoning ordinance Section one point one one zero five, accessory building structures and uses effective January first, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, have a motion? Did someone support?
Support.
And who was that?
Smith.
Thank you sir. I have a motion to approve and I have support. Um, roll call please.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lippman.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki. Commissioner Good.
Yes.
And Mayor Hile.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you all. The next item in this agenda item is retail and retail services in the manufacturing district, Will. Thank you, I'm gonna share the screen again. Okay, so there's two amendments being proposed here. One would be creating a special land use in the manufacturing district for stores for retail and retail services. This came about from a, a local business owner who wanted to use a vacant manufacturing, uh, type building in the manufacturing zoning district. It's part of a large building that they would be rehabbing a portion of it to allow a, a, uh, kind of a unique, uh, retail business in this space. So the amendments here would be, uh, one would create the special land use in the manufacturing district for stores for retail and retail services, while the other, uh, put the special conditions for the special land use. So some of the things discussed for the conditions were the, the size of the space for a minimum, so there weren't a bunch of small locations. Second would be that would have to be co-located with a permitted site. Uh, another item, the percentage of the building being utilized for the space. Another was the off-site, off-street parking would have to be within a three hundred feet of the building in which they serve and then just the signing, the signed regulations in which they would have to be following. Be happy to answer any questions regarding this. Any questions for, uh, Will on this portion of this agenda item? Commissioner Lippman.
Now, can you, uh, give us the address on that building again, please?
That's on the, I don't have the exact address. It's on the corner of Prairie and Wendell, the old Lakeland Paper Building.
Okay. Any idea what the percentage is they're gonna use of it?
I think the building is, uh, several hundred thousand square feet and they're gonna use about eight thousand square feet of it.
Oh, okay. Alright, thank you.
Sure. Thank you Commissioner Lippman. Any other questions from the commission on this piece, this portion of the topic? I see no other hands waving at me. Andrew, let's see if there's anybody in the public who would like to make a comment on this, uh, topic. Sure, once again, for members of the public, please use the raise hand feature. You recognize for public comment? I see none, Mr. Mayor. Thank you Andrew. Um, again, any other questions for Will on this topic here? Seeing none, what say the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Sturgis City Commission consider this the second reading of and approve amendments to the City of Sturgis zoning ordinance Sections one point zero four one zero manufacturing and one point zero six zero three special land use designated pertaining to stores for retail and retail services in the manufacturing district effective January first, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have support?
Mullins.
Thank you Jeff. Um, I have support. Um, roll call please.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Lippman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki. Mayor Hile.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. The last item on, uh, last section of this, of this agenda item is two family dwellings in R three. Will. Thank you, share screen last time. All there? Yep, I see it. Okay, thank you. This you're here would create a special land use in the R three zoning district for a two-family dwelling. It also updates a couple of the conditions that are already in place for a special land use for two-family dwelling. The, this was brought up, uh, two thousand fifteen, special, or two-family dwellings were removed as a special land use from the R three zoning district. And most recently, it was brought back up. We had a developer who was looking to, uh, turn a, an existing vacant commercial building and they wanted to turn that into a duplex, which was not allowed. So we took it to the Planning Commission. It was discussed in, in detail and we, uh, the Planning Commission recommended this after a public hearing at the November seventeenth meeting. And a couple of the changes from the special land use conditions were just that all of the driveway and parking area would have to be solid surface and that it allowed an adaptive reuse of a non-residential building, um, to be considered. So, be happy to answer any questions. Is there any questions for Will on this last topic item from the commission? I see no hands waving at me. Again, Andrew, let's try her again. Is there anybody in the public that would like to make comment? Uh, so once again, any members of the public wish to make, uh, comment on this agenda item, please use the raise hand feature? I see none, Mr. Mayor. Thank you Andrew. Uh, one more last, last chance here to, to, for commission comments on this? Seeing none, what say the commission?
Mayor Hile?
Commissioner Malone?
I move that the Sturgis City Commission consider this the second reading of and approve amendments to the City of Sturgis zoning ordinance Sections one point zero four zero three R three residential and one point zero six zero three special land use designated pertaining to two-family dwellings effective January first, two thousand twenty-one.
And who was that?
Skip.
Yep, and I have a support by Skip. Uh, Commissioner Lippman, uh, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki. Commissioner Good.
Nay.
Commissioner Smith.
Nay.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Lippman.
Yes.
And Mayor Hile.
Yes.
Six votes to two, motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Uh, Will, thank you for all your work you've done on this and please let the Planning Commission know too that we appreciate what they do. Thank you sir. Uh, next item, the next, uh, I, uh, sec- section on our agenda is the new business section and the first item there is Pilot Agreement Amendments, first reading, Andrew. Thank you Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners. Uh, earlier this year, the commission approved tax exemptions and payment in lieu of taxes, or as I'll be referring to them pilots, uh, for the Saint Joseph Street Lofts and Monroe Street Lofts, uh, proposed housing developments. I, I did provide in the manager's report, uh, a brief review of what those projects entailed. They're both, um, income-based apartment complexes, uh, one focusing on uh, families, one focusing on seniors. Um, both of the projects have been seeking funding through the Michigan Housing Development Authority's Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. Um, they both applied uh, for the only funding round in two thousand twenty. Uh, unfortunately, neither one received funding in that funding round. Um, but both are looking to resubmit, uh, in February of two thousand twenty-one. So in order to kinda prep the ground and get them ready to resubmit, we were taking a look at all the different, uh, forms and functions, things that they, they're required to have. Um, the pilot is one of those, those elements that, uh, gets them points towards, uh, MISHDA funding in this case. Um, in our case, our pilot- Um, in our case, our pilot ordinances for both projects put in an automatic repeal date of February twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Uh, typically, you know, i- if everything had gone to plan and we didn't have to deal with COVID, this would have given them a chance to apply for two different funding rounds uh this year. Um, kind of really understand whether the, the projects were able to be funded by MISHDA. Um, but, you know, with the year being odd and different, uh, the second funding round was canceled and the first funding round was significantly delayed, so that, that timeframe really um, really didn't hold for more than the, the one, the one application period. Um, as I said, there, there's gonna be another funding round in February of twenty twenty one. Uh, their, MISHDA won't be announcing whether funding is received until April, so that uh, date of the twenty eighth will uh, will come and go before, before they'll know if uh, if they have funding. Um, again, so we're proposing an amendment to that um that automatic repeal date, changing it from February twenty eighth, twenty twenty one to August thirty first, twenty twenty two. That was kind of in talking with the uh, the developers, a, a date that gave them opportunities to reapply uh a couple of different times next year, uh ample time to, to not only apply, but then also get word back from uh, from MISHDA. So uh, that's our, our recommendation is to make that change. Um, note that the, the pilot doesn't go into effect unless they're awarded and begin construction on the project. So until that, until that happens, the, the pilot doesn't, doesn't become effective. So happy to answer any questions you have on this.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, any questions for Andrew on this topic? From the commission? I don't see anybody waving at me. Let's uh ask if the public has comment.
Uh, for members of the public, once again, use the raise hand feature if you wish to make a comment on this agenda item. I see none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Again, one last chance here. Any comments from the commission on this topic? See no hands waving at me. What say the commission?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Klinger, I move that the Sturgis City Commission consider this the first reading of an amendment to the city code of ordinances, chapter two, section two, three oh seven and two dash three oh eight to the date of automatic repeal of the tax exemptions for Think Joe Street Lofts and Monroe Street Lofts as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Klinger. Do I have support?
Mr. Good, support.
Okay, I saw, I, I got both you, uh, John and Skip, so we do have support. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki. Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Littman.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
And Mayor Heil.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you all on this and
You, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse, thank you, Andrew, for what you, the work you did on this. Appreciate it. And I know you're gonna be back for one more reading. Uh, the next item on our agenda is NIDRA. Uh, Michael Hughes, I believe we have a guest here, Mr. Jeff Wenzel, our Drain Commission. Michael?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I requested that uh the Drain Commissioner, Mr. Wenzel, attend. Um, so he can answer any questions on the Drain Code, uh, which seems to be a pretty complex um law that's out there. So anyway, I'll just do a quick background. Uh, most of this you're familiar with, but there was a Sturgis uh town, I'm sorry, petition uh filed through Sturgis Township uh to the Drain, Drain Commissioner requesting maintenance and improvement of the NIDRA. Uh, the petition required that the Drain Commission have it, what's called a board of determination meeting. And that occurred on December sixth, two thousand eighteen. The Board of Determination found that a maintenance improvement project was necessary and therefore uh, the Drain Code requires the Drain Commissioner to work on a project scope and to address the improvements. Uh, a while later, the city commission approved and uh, it was on October twenty eighth uh, in agreement with the Drain Commissioner uh to create the White Elephant Expansion Project. And the result of that is that it reduced the project scope um from the Board of Determination. And so uh, created a smaller project and the Drain Commissioner moved forward with letting that project and then holding what's required a day of review of apportionments to lay out the assessment role for the project. That uh, day of review was held on November twenty fourth. So uh, included in the packet, I included the assessment role, which is the breakdown of the required payments uh from those that, that are going to be assessed. The assessment amount for the city of Sturgis is seventy-three thousand, three hundred and one dollars and fifteen cents. Um, as historically done, the, the assessment role is set up so that the city at large assessment included city of Sturgis property owner assessments. With the exception of a, a few properties that directly benefited from adding a district branch. So we're provided a couple of options to make payment. We can prepay the entire amount or uh, the Drain Commissioner is providing financing, so we could spread that over five years at two percent. And then there's also a, a bond council fee that I took my best guess and estimated that is around twelve hundred dollars. Uh, we budgeted thirty-four thousand dollars in this fiscal year for the project. Um, we didn't have very good information on, on what that would be and, and uh Drain Commissioner might want to speak to uh the fact that the project came in substantially higher than I think what they anticipated. But um, nevertheless, our amount is the uh is the seventy-three thousand plus. So there are two considerations for the commission this evening. One is uh deciding whether to prepay or spread that over five years. Uh, I'm recommending that we pay the entire amount. And then, of course, if you were to proceed with that, then it would require a budget amendment. So at this point, I um, answer any questions and of course Jeff is available if you have any questions for him.
Jeff, would you like to add anything to what Michael has told us so far to clarify anything? Unmute yourself, Jeff.
Okay. Can you hear me?
There we go.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, this has been an ongoing issue and it, it's not been a lot of fun. There's two property owners in, in particular um, that have gone back and forth with flooding and it's not my water, it's your water and um so once the petition was turned in to the Drain Office, um we went forward with the, the um Board of Determination determined that on Fawn River Road, we correct the issue. And I'm thinking, Mike, what, isn't the White Elephant like a, like a five-year flood right now?
Yeah, it's, it's less than that.
Yeah, and, and so yeah, we're working it out to be like over an eighty-year uh flood, which is gonna be really good, uh, especially for the people over on Fawn River Road. When we went out for bidding um on our NIDRA extension, it's, it's a new branch. Um, it was hard for me to get uh local bidders because everybody told me that they're busy and couldn't get to it. And we'd like to do this, this winter as soon as possible. And um, the bids came in anywhere from one nineteen to one eighty-five. And I took the lowest bid for the project. And um, so we did run over a little bit, but um I try to watch as closely as I can, but we need it done this year rather than two years from now. So basically, um then we had our day of review and um, the project will be starting very soon. It'll be um shortly here. So I, I was hoping the project to come around, in around sixty to seventy thousand. They, they were quite a bit higher. It's get, kind of where we're at.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Um, any questions either for Michael or Mr. Wenzel on this topic on the NIDRA from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Mullins has his hand raised.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Andrew. Uh, Jeff Wenzel, it's nice to uh finally put a face of the name. I've heard your name and seen it all over the place.
Thank you.
Never, I don't think we've ever met, so it's nice to finally see you. Um, question maybe, it's probably for you. I don't know if Mike might be able to step in there too, but these, this um assessment role that you have for landowners that are the private landowners there, there's a whole lot of people listed there. Um, they're from all over the place. I understand that every address it's given is their, their home address, not the property they own. Um, is that, I mean, I'm guessing that's correct, right?
Uh, that, that is correct. The property tax ID is the property that's shown in the district. In every, okay, and every, every drain has a historic district. And it's basically the watershed. And these are properties that are within the watershed district.
Okay, well, I was gonna ask, is that, is there some kind of a map that shows where these? Because I've, I've noticed that on a lot of these addresses that I've seen, they kind of bore around where I actually live and I I was looking down the list to make sure my name wasn't on there. It wasn't, probably wouldn't be that much, but, but is there like a, a specific area then? Is it all the Sunny Field and Lane, all that stuff north? And then uh, you know, it just goes so far to the east before it doesn't go to that area anymore? I, I'm guessing that's why they're being charged?
Um, correct, correct. It's basically from uh US twelve south. Um, Lakeview west. And um Bulk Road east, and then the state line and north. So that's basically the watershed for the NIDRA. The night, the NIDRA starts over by uh, uh, Ottawa Road, close to where the radio station is. Goes underneath the iron and metal. Um, the yard there, there, there's a big tile, crosses uh um M sixty-six or Centerville Road, makes a little jog there. And then it heads out and uh, ends up down by Bojan Road at the, at the Fawn River. So basically, that's the watershed um where I just said from the roads. It, it isn't exactly those roads, but that's basically where it is. Yeah. So a lot of the people, landowners, everyone pays based on benefit. So um, they benefit more of those landowners that we were talking about because they're closer to the drain.
And I don't know if it's a, it's a dumb question or not, but I saw some Indiana addresses on there. Those are just property owners that live in Indiana. Are there any that properties in Indiana that are being assessed for this, or is that's not?
No.
Possible, right?
No, no properties are, are in Indiana and what you saw was where the uh where the, that was the owner lives in Indiana.
Okay, yeah, I, I figured that. I just didn't know since you said it went all the way down to the state line, if there's any benefit to any of the people on the other side that had to contribute in some way of agreements, but
Right, no, no, I can't go over into Indiana and, and assess. No.
Okay, well, uh, thank you. Again, nice to meet you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Commissioner Good has a question or his hand raised.
Commissioner Good.
Yes, uh, that is a far-reaching uh, a watershed uh that pulls into Elaine Manor as well. I just found it interesting that uh, uh, that Elaine Manor people were being assessed for uh the NIDRA and I never, never did consider that uh that uh watershed reached out that far. But uh, seeing all those names and those addresses from the uh from the Elaine Manor area, just uh, I found it extremely interesting. And then when I looked at the, that roll, I noticed that down at the bottom, it says city of Sturgis zero three different times. So I'm not sure uh, how that shook out, but uh, uh, it's just a, an interesting uh concept that that watershed is so far-reaching. And uh, but those amounts are certainly not uh astronomical on those individuals. It's just that uh you know, it reaches out to them and everybody's paying their share, I guess. So I just found that uh uh, an interesting concept.
And Commissioner Good, you, you bring up a good point. Um, and by law, whenever I have um, and a petition project, I have to use a licensed engineer. So the, and the engineers do all the figuring on percentages on um, where property is, land use. Um, what um, what their benefit is. It's all about benefits derived. And so you can see some of those properties over um, on Elaine Drive. They're like eighteen dollars. So they have a benefit. If we had frozen ground and, and a heavy rain or heavy snow and it melted, eventually that drain helps um relieve properties that are in the in the assessment district, which is basically the watershed. Yeah. It does get very difficult.
Thank you, John. Um, any other questions or comments for either Jeff or Michael?
Commissioner Burr has his hand raised, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Burr.
Yes, this goes to either uh, Jeff or Michael. Um, so this whole project was brought about basically because uh, you had a couple complaints about the water draining John to properties.
Um, I was getting calls from Affordable Tool Rental. And Affordable Tool Rental was getting um, a lot of water and it was flooding out their, their properties. I was also getting calls from uh Lone Spruce Farm Services. And um, they were continually complaining that they were um, being flooded out. Now, as everyone knows, in the last three years, we've had extreme amounts of rain. Um, we could tip the scale the other way for the next five years, but um I only do what uh, the Board of Determination determines um, at the, at the public meeting. And um, I, at the Board of um Determination to determine whether we have a project or not, I had two township supervisors from uh, one from White Pigeon, one from Park Township. And then I had a farmer on that board. So that three-person board makes the decision whether I move forward with the project or whether the project is not necessary. So I was just, I was doing what they made the decision for me to have to go forward with.
But maybe just to um, to give a little bit more specific background and, and Jeff, I may not have this completely straight, so correct me. Um, I believe that Affordable Tool um, essentially requested Sturgis Township to file a petition. The Fawn River um, property owner wasn't included in that original petition, but property owners um, appeared at the Board of Determination meeting and, and complained. And that's when the Board of Determination added the Fawn River into the project.
That is correct, Mike. Yep, thank you.
Well, my question kind of goes to, why is the onus on everybody except for the people who built their properties? Uh, their businesses on low-lying ground such as Affordable? Did, uh, you could see that that's in a a very low area. I'm sure it was flooded long before they built there when it rained. Um what kind of responsibility are they held to?
Yeah, they're, they're gonna have a, a hefty assessment also. Um and, and um, Commissioner Burr, I, I understand where you're coming from and what happens when in the Drain Office is kind of difficult because when we get a rain, the people that are up high on a, on a hill, they're like, we don't have any problem with, with the rain. Why do we have to help pay? But their, their water actually contributes to someone's that's below the hill that's getting flooded out. And then the people down below the hill say, well, I don't want to have to pay for that. That's not my water. That comes from up on the hill. So I we I hear it both ways. Nobody wants to help if they can get out of an assessment for drainage. But I'm just following with the Drain Code of nineteen fifty-six and the amendments from that are telling me what I have to do. And and it says that basically the Board of Determination determines whether to go forward with that project or not.
Right. Well, I'm just saying it's 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 just kind of unconcealed to me if I build in a in a pit and it drains. That shouldn't be everyone else's problem because I there again, you know where where it was built, where affordable is. There's the lowest spot anywhere. I mean, you go to the businesses, they're just south of that. The believe us, insurance agents and the, you know, prompt care building were built high. They didn't build low. So therefore, I still don't quite get. And I guess it's not going to go anywhere, but I still don't understand why we pay for someone else's bad judgments.
Yeah, and that was definitely brought up at the Board of Determination when we had that public hearing. And there were many people that were saying exactly that.
Okay. Well, I gave my two.
It's not. It's not just Affordable Tool Rental. Lone Spruce is on top of the hill. It's it's not just Affordable Tool Rental. It's being fact.
Right, right, Commissioner Smith, but you, since you're new, we have maps that go back years. Lone Spruce actually built in an area that was the lagoon. They filled up the area years ago and built in a low lying area. So that the onus was kind of on them too for doing that. There again, can't go back and change what was, but another bad decision. But there again, I suppose all the drainage with all the extra building we have and all the road systems has increased over the years. So that's something I guess we have to take care of. I just concerned about something that was done that long ago and it seems like it should have been built in higher ground or put some fill in there and not be built in a hole. And like I say, it's just my opinion and I just had that question and thank you, Jeff, for all the explanations and your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Burr.
And Commissioner Burr.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Mullins has his hand raised.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yeah, hey, Jeff, Rick brought up something that was pretty interesting to me is that you know, and I I thought the same way as him as well, but you had said that Affordable Tool does have a hefty portion of this. I'm I'm kind of scrolling through and I don't see that. I don't know if it's under a personal name or not, but you do you know the amount that they have to pay on this particular?
Is it wasn't, I'm I've got the district here, but I'm thinking it's like eighty-five hundred dollars. It's somewhere in that in that neighborhood. Doesn't sound like a lot compared to the city's assessment. But the city's assessment is covering way more acreage than than what their assessment is.
Do they own that that much property there? Is that, I mean, or is it just true benefit that they're receiving because they won't be flooded anymore? That's the reason why they get more money. They have to pay more?
Yeah, it's based on benefit. Okay, we base assessments on benefit. Yep.
All right. Well, thank you again.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other comments? Or concerns? If not, are there anybody? Is there any comments from our audience, Andrew?
Once again, for our audience members joining us via the Zoom meeting, please use the raise hand feature if you wish to make a public comment on this agenda item. I see none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. What say that there are two motions on this on the Nide drain topic here? What say the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Sturgis City Commission authorized city staff to, oh, sorry. The, sorry, approved an amendment. The prepaying total assessment. I I missed the first motion here. I'm sorry. I moved to the City Commission approved prepaying the total assessment amount for the Nide drain project in the amount of seventy-three thousand, three hundred and one dollars and fifteen cents as presented.
Do I have a motion by Commissioner Klinger? Do I have support?
Support. Smith.
Work by Mr. Smith. Before we do this, do we have to do a budget amendment at the same time here, either Holly or Michael?
You you can just, you know, take that action next.
Okay. Sorry. So I have a motion to approve and support Ken Rhodes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Lippman.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki, Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Mayor Heil.
Yes. That portion of the motion carries. Did you say, Michael, we need to make an emotion to amend the the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay, would someone like to, would one of the commissioners like to make a motion to to adjust the budget, a budget amendment for this?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Klinger, I also move that the Sturgis City Commission approve an amendment to the general expenditures of forty thousand dollars for the Nide drain project assessment as presented.
Do I have a motion by Commissioner Klinger? Do I have support?
Support, Commissioner Good.
And support by Miss Commissioner Good. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiki, Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Lippman.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
And Mayor Heil.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you all. And Jeff, thank you for attending our meeting with the information you gave us. It was very helpful. Thank you, Michael, for the work you and Barry, I believe, helped a little bit with this also. Thank you all. The last item on our on our agenda is temporary sidewalk retail in B dash three. Andrew.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners. Currently, City of Sturgis allows businesses in the Central Business Zoning District, the B C District, to use sidewalks to display retail and other merchandise from their business with certain restrictions. Normally, around this time, the Downtown Development Authority also holds an outdoor Christmas market. Unfortunately, due to some of the state restrictions and other issues related to COVID, that was canceled for this year. But there was some interest from businesses in allowing these outside vendors, which don't have an association with a business in downtown, to to kind of set up in front of their business. So basically giving them a chance to individually, not as part of an event, set up and sell some of their wares. So staff in working to help make that possible is recommending that for the month of December, you provide us the ability to approve temporary outdoor sales areas in Central Business District and waive temporary business license fees and requirements with some cert with certain conditions, one being that they receive permission of the business that they want to operate out in front of. Two, that they maintain the five foot clear walkway that's required under the section if if a normal business or a downtown business was to set up. Also, that they follow the the procedure for removing all their materials at the end of the day. And then maintaining six feet distance between vendors and also six feet social distance for their for their customers and, you know, following COVID restrictions. So trying to do something to allow these vendors a chance to to sell some of their material. Some of them, you know, were anticipating being part of the Christmas market and had already purchased purchased materials. I think this was an initiative that some downtown businesses were were trying to trying to help out with and we're we're trying to do our best to help accommodate that as well. So happy to answer any questions you may have this time.
Okay, any questions for Andrew? I don't see any hands jumping up here. Andrew, just check the audience, please.
For anybody attending the meeting, if you wish to make public comment, please use the raise hand feature. I see none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Any, again, last chance, any comments on this on this topic? See none. What say the commission?
Commissioner Mayor, I move that the Sturgis City Commission authorized city staff to approve temporary outdoor retail sales areas in the B C zoning district and waived temporary business license requirements as presented through December of twenty twenty.
Thank you, Commissioner Klinger. I have a motion by him to do to poke to approve this. Do I have support?
Support, Commissioner Good.
Thank you, Commissioner Good. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wiki. Commissioner Burr.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mullins.
Yes.
Commissioner Lippman.
Yes.
Commissioner Malone.
Yes.
Commissioner Good.
Yes.
And Mayor Heil.
Yes. Motion carries. I think this is a very good project to help the people that don't generally do business and do it on the type that they're doing here. I think it's a good deal for this to happen. Thank you, Andrew, for all your work. We are now to the commission and commission and staff comments. I'm gonna start down again. If nobody moves, I'm gonna start down here with Will. Will, do you have anything else to add, please?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rhodes, do you have anything else to add?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. Holly.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you. Andrew.
Nothing further. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Roger.
Good dog and you mayor, but I have nothing further tonight.
Same thing, Roger. Our deputy public safety director, Andrew.
Nothing to add, sir.
Okay, let's see here. I think Barry signed off. It looks like. And it looks like we have lost. Oh, he's back. Michael Hughes. Michael.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I'm not sure what happened. I just lost connection for some reason. Is it my turn?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you. Two quick things. And I did send some information to you, but have scheduled a rural transmission line presentation on December sixteen from five thirty to six thirty. We have sent letters, I believe they're in the mail, sent letters to residents, not only on the preferred route, but also on other routes that we've discussed. And I also believe there is a Facebook post just to let people know that we're having the meeting. So we're going to share the preferred route. And we have some opportunity that we've distributed for feedback as well. The other thing I wanted to mention, the Santa Box project, sort of our replacement for Christmas in the city, we've had a great response, I think. Well, I guess what I should say is as we're coordinating with the North Pole, we we've received a great response and it's something I'm really glad we did. It's a small thing, but we'll be coordinating that and working with the North Pole to get get letters out. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. We'll go down to the commissioners now and again, if nothing jars here, Commissioner Burr.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Klinger. You're up. There you go.
We are. We are. Not nothing this evening. Just continue to support the small businesses in town. You know, they really need it.
Thank you, Commissioner Klinger. Commissioner Good.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just want to extend my thanks to all those that have offered up their good wishes to me during this period of quarantine. And I look forward to getting back on the on the horse here. Thank you.
Okay, you get well, please. I'm gonna keep going right across the line here. Vice Mayor Mullins. You're next in line.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Commissioner Good, you're not gonna get back on the horse. You're gonna get back on that sleigh. I want to say thanks to Andrew again for coordinating all this stuff. Not only this meeting, but I've been in others where you've helped facilitate as well. You you got a lot of stuff on your plate, but I appreciate you doing all this stuff. Mike had mentioned the the North Pole mailbox there. So I guess I just wanted to let everybody know that we should give a big thank you to Julie Berkey as well for her coordinating efforts with the North Pole as well, because she's doing a lot of work in that. The warming shelters that Mike had in his weekly update to us. I think it's, I don't know if anybody's still there. I think they've all taken off that we're here from the United Way and all, but but the United Way, St. John's Church, the Salvation Army, Deputy Director Strudwick, as well as Director Benazak, we had a part in that. So thank you all for that. And while I'm on the subject of Strudwick, I'm very happy to see you here tonight, virtually protecting us all. I was wondering if you had something on the agenda. You didn't, so I figured you're just here to virtually protect us. So good to see you. And also the Giving Tuesday, I just wanted to mention that because I'm I'm part of the Sturgis Area Community Foundation Grant Review Team, and we did some work on giving away money prior to this Giving Tuesday thing, but but it's an awful lot of fun to give away money, and I think it was really cool that that Sturgis got so much help from that. And so anybody that nominated the city for any of their money that they received, thank you all. That's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Very, very well said. Commissioner Malone.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, I heard that our reporter that usually covers these commission meetings, him and his family have COVID, so I just like to wish them get well soon.
All righty. Thank you, sir, for mentioning that. Commissioner Lippman.
I think I agree with Commissioner Good and wish everybody well for the season. Stay healthy. Chase the germs out the front door and keep on going, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The only couple comments I'll make is we have a meeting coming up and I believe it's on Monday, the twenty first. That's our next and last meeting for the year. So please make sure that's on your calendar. And we're meeting on a Monday rather than our normal Wednesday. Other than that, I want to thank everybody for attending tonight. I appreciate it. We are going to be adjourned. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.